Okay, council, it's seven o'clock on December the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. I call this meeting to order. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, into a republic for which it stands, one nation, under the indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before, before we do roll call, Ms. Martinez, councillor Yan V. Hill notified us that he's probably about a minute away. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. But up next, we have roll call.
Okay, all councillors present with councillor Jamie Dominguez previously requesting to be excused, and his absence is an excused absence.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, the agenda approval. Councillor Carson?
I will move that we approve the agenda, mayor, as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome. Brings us up to the next item on the agenda. It's citizen comments. This is a segment of the agenda to where if we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments, you're free to make those comments. We do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. If you're still speaking at the three-minute mark, in which we keep a clock right over there, we will politely ask you to end your conversation at that time. We'll start off with the audience participants here and then go to Zoom. Ms. Martinez, I don't have any comment cards for the audience here today.
I don't have any either, mayor.
Okay, so what we'll do then is we'll go to Zoom to, if you could explain to them how to raise their hands to be recognized if there's anyone on Zoom who would like to make any comments.
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for a public comment, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see anyone choosing to raise their hand, mayor.
I don't see any hands raised either, Ms. Martinez, so we'll go ahead and close that segment of the agenda and move on down to the next item on the agenda, which is consent calendar A, councillor V. Hill.
Mayor, I apologize I was late. Just came in from basketball practice. I move to approve consent calendar A.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Okay.
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome, good. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, presentation from outside agencies. Lead and co-responder update.
I'm just turning the microphones on.
You want to go first? Okay, can you hear me when I do this? Okay. Well, hello, everybody. Nice to see you.
See you too.
Not very many people here today. So I guess I thought I would give you some basics, and if you have any questions, just ask me. We had forty-six referrals October through today. We've successfully enrolled about thirty of those. And we say about because some of them are in process right now. We're trying to talk them into it. We have fifty-eight active in the program right now. And the good news is we had three diversions in the last, I know, about, about a month ago. And we have six social referrals. Those are really co-responder referrals. And then we have thirty-seven from kind of the rest of that group. And when I talk about the rest of that group, what I mean by that is about fifty-four percent total are like criminal justice-related agencies, like our community corrections, like probation, and then forty-six percent are healthcare. Could be like the hospitals, Rio Grande Recovery Center, La Puente, I stick those in there. So those are our numbers, and we are still fully staffed, which is really great because we're busier than we've ever been. So we're, we may start looking at, if I can find one, another vehicle at one point. We're really, we've got two vehicles and we're, we're moving. And we're out there. So yeah, things are going well. And we're enjoying working with Stephanie and Sergeant Squires and Lemmy Chief. It's been great.
Okay, our coresponders, they made two hundred and ten community contacts this quarter. Nine jail assessments were done in jail, or in December. The team attended training on emergency commitments, involuntary commitments for drugs and alcohol. We did mental health commitments, short-term and long-term certifications, and court-ordered meds, which all are available in the valley. They just weren't being utilized, so we did some training on those. We're working to better help the community departments utilize those resources. Lots of work at Saint Benedict's, cleanups, it's looking good. The citizens are all dissipating and engaging, so that's great.
Okay, so what we'll do is I'll open up the mic and council members may have some questions for you all, okay? I'll start off with councillor Carson first, and then next councillor V. Hill, then councillor Hensley.
A quick question. When you said the, the resources that were available, what the, I missed what you said it was. Did you say beds?
No, so they're like emergency commitments, which law enforcement is already doing when we put someone in detox. So the emergency commitment is just the follow-up step. So if you have somebody who's utilizing detox a lot, they're not caring for themselves, ending up in ERs a lot, you can petition through the state to have them involuntary committed for drugs and alcohol treatment.
Is that like an M. One, or?
No, it's different because M. One's like mental health, and this would be substance abuse.
And are you utilizing the M. One more?
Yeah.
Because I, I've heard of a couple people getting an M. One, and I hadn't heard of it in years, like those people I thought should. So that's good for you guys. I'm glad that you're able to use it as a tool now. You know, I just wanted those, to ask those questions, but I also wanted to say thank you. Looks like your numbers are good. I don't, the, the fact that you have a bunch of people enrolled, I don't know how that makes me feel, if it's good or bad, but it's good that the program's working and that, you know, people are using it. So thank you, guys.
And I, I think, I think Stephanie and I talked today that at a future meeting, we might go more in-depth, but not only has Stephanie been an amazing fit for the department and in this job, but her work experience up in the front range to see how some of these court-ordered processes are utilized almost on a regular basis is going to transform some of the systems we have here in the valley because we were really banging our head against some walls, not being able to help individuals that needed something more. And, and getting this down into the valley is really going to transform some systems, and it's really super exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Carson. Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Councillor Yan V. Hill and councillor Hensley.
Thank you, mayor. No questions. Just again, thank you for all your work you do. Just keep chugging. Thanks.
Thank you.
So I, I know that you're helping out with the jail and going in there. And so obviously, appreciative that you're taking that extra step. But I was curious, because obviously I know that sometimes you're working with people regularly, and obviously I assume sometimes that's also in the jail now that you're visiting there. Is there actually some, so, do you feel like there's some positive coming from that, that you're seeing them there as well?
Yes, so recently, we had a, a guy in jail that they did an assessment on, decided he was not safe, but he was eligible to bond. His family did bond him out from out of state. So we were able to point five him from the jail, have the, or the sheriff's office do it, take him to the ER where he was only put on an M. One and transferred into inpatient psych in Denver. So it was helpful instead of just letting him bond without a safety plan.
So in a way, obviously circumstances, the way it is, there is some assets to it, actually. You see them all the way sort of through, and obviously I would assume sometimes when they're in the jail, especially with substance abuse, maybe they're, have a different mindset when they're in there because, and I'm asking, I guess, because obviously they're not using while they're there, or maybe just, I don't know.
Right, yeah, get a little clear-minded, but yeah. I mean, it was nice to be able to utilize that, that point five out of the jail because the option was, we figure out a plan quick before he just walks out, so.
Thank you very much.
And I just think that's an amazing example of the transformation that's happened for our police department because it's not like they're teaching that stuff at the law, the academy, the point five, the M. One. Like, it's that whole language and the background of what those steps are, it's just, it's been transformative.
Okay, and then I'll just wrap things up. You all did real good with the numbers. I really appreciate the numbers because that's what we use when we're talking to the people in the community. Stephanie, you mentioned two hundred and ten, but I didn't get a chance to write down what the two hundred and ten, what that number represented.
Yeah, so that's just contacts, calls, walking around, like if they're at Saint Benedict's and somebody walks up asking for resources, it's two hundred and ten community members.
That's good. We're serving a lot of people and meeting these people where they are. The key is for us, we want to make sure that when, when they're ready to make up their mind, they get the services and help, we are able to provide those. And as a city, as a council, as a staff, we're being responsible in that matter, so really appreciate that. Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, council. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, homeless coalition board appointment.
So you guys just need to make an appointment to the homeless coalition. You guys interviewed Jonathan Gears on December fourth, and he had applied for the homeless coalition to serve as the community representative. You've got six different vacancies on that board, so if you, when you motion, if you could make the appointment into that representative spot, that'd be great.
Okay, so you just need a motion since he's the only one, right?
And include the representative position that you want him in.
Okay. Councillor Carson?
I would move that we, that we nominate a point, that we appoint Jonathan Gears to the community representative position of the homeless coalition.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion. Second, any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
No worries. Okay, that brings us to the next item, business brought forward by city staff, the quarterly update on housing and downtown plan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
Good evening, Ms. Sanchez.
Our last downtown and housing quarterly update for the year. First slide, please. Okay, so the Valhagen clock ribbon cutting was incredibly well-attended, very festive. You can just see the exuberance on Beata's face there, lots of outreach beforehand. The true labor of love getting that clock restored, and now it is a beautiful point in our downtown that we all get to admire.
And people were crying at the ribbon cutting.
It was, it was pretty magical. I'm not going to lie. It is probably, of all the projects that we've done, in some ways, this is the most exciting and the most meaningful. I mean, I, I've never seen this level of passion and emotion in the public, both when they chose the location at the H-PAC meeting over a year ago and then at the ribbon cutting itself. It was, it's a, the truly meaningful, amazing, beautiful project for Alamosa. So if I could have just done my whole presentation, just pictures of this day, I would have done it. Although I do have a really wonderful picture of Ty on one of these slides that will, that will make this whole presentation for you guys. Okay, so I made this bullet very simple. I think we all remember how much work council and staff put into it, but facilitated the Alamosa School District moving downtown. So that encompasses code amendments and work sessions and all sorts of stuff. So it happened, and I do believe they've closed on that building. We put out two RFPs at the end of the year. One is for the alleyway design, for the activated alleys, the two million dollar grant we got from DOLA. We did have a response from a local guy, and he's, they're chugging along. So it's kind of been taken over by Steve Copley as the construction manager for the city, and luckily, my department still gets to do the pretty stuff, which is sort of our favorite. And then finally, a request for proposals for the banner design, which should close at the end of the month. And so we're just concentrating on getting some cool designs from local artists, and then we're going to have them fabricated from a company. We're actually going to have our Main Street Committee make the decision on which ones to choose. So that are, those are our projects. This is funding. This is something that council knows about, but technically, you know, we haven't gotten any really cool grants in the last three months, but you did set a five hundred dollar fee for vacant buildings that goes into the general fund. And this is just a little annoying nudge to get people to start to use their vacant buildings. We did also do the, the registration form, so. Oops, back one. Thank you. Okay. The ASU internship program was an amazing program. We're going to do a special presentation to council at some point, I believe. But just so neat to see young people talking about the downtown and trying to get involved. It was kind of illuminating that some of their perspectives are so different. They think, they make me feel kind of old because some of their perspectives are really different, and like some of the social media platforms they talk about, I've never heard of. I've never been particularly cool, but I didn't realize I was that much out of touch. But they were great kids, really innovative, brilliant ideas for the downtown. It was a, it was really cool process, and their final presentations were very professional. Like, just, they just hit, hit the ball out of the park. They did a great job. We also sent what I assume was a very well-received letter to our downtown business owners about the programmable space. And then they have, our, our business owners downtown are responsible for cleaning snow and cleaning trash and debris in the programmable space, the same way they are with the sidewalks. I say it's well-received because I have not heard anything, so I don't know if you've heard anything. I know it's, it's a controversial topic, the space between the two curbs, but it's been three years now, and I think people are at least kind of a little bit more comfortable with it than they were, even though some people are still kind of unhappy. So, next slide, please. Housing. We did a couple big pre-development meetings, one for an infill development, kind of on the south side, and one for large market rate housing, rather large development by the high school, which is exciting. I did a presentation without the safety net of Don Melgaras to the Behavioral Health Administration on Horizon Heights. And it was very cool because it was all of the, all of the projects that that behavioral grant, behavioral health grant supported around the state. And so, you know, lots of mental health support and lots of things on the front range, a lot of support for substance abuse facilities, but not really anything that was just housing. And so it was a really cool moment where like, you know, the city of Alamosa looked at a behavioral health grant and decided that those, you know, housing and behavioral health are so integrated that getting a behavioral health grant just for housing was, you know, the appropriate use of those funds. And to be honest, I screenshot some of the comments that people said during my presentation, and they agreed. Like, it's a, it's a brilliant use of funds, and I think we've already seen how positive those outcomes are for the people that live there. Our city manager was just telling me this morning that at one point or another, almost every single person that has lived at Horizon Heights, because two people have already lived there and successfully moved on to new housing, but everybody who's lived there has at one point in their life experienced homelessness. So just incredible project. Did a kickoff with the Tierra Zul Construction Team, great guys, so professional, just like, you know, CRHDC hired the best people they could to build Tierra Zul for us. So we're so confident that construction's going to, you know, kick off in the spring and just be sort of seamless. So we feel really good that we're part of those conversations, and they're talking to all our Public Works guys, and, you know, just really great partners. And then finally, kind of a more in-depth meeting. We've met with coresponders before, but we actually had a meeting with like Adult Productive Services about one of our cases, and we're just sort of diving deep to try to see if we can help some of these folks that are in just sort of a bad position. Their houses are not, they can't live in these houses. They're unfit and unsafe to live in, but how do we find options for people that are elderly or developmentally disabled? So how do we find housing options? Because they really don't have any. And so it's sort of taking planning and zoning to a new level when you're meeting with, you know, that level of support services to try to get help for our community. Next, please. We got another million dollars. It's just, no big deal, just a million. But this is last Thursday, I believe. The state reached out and said that one of their projects had pulled out of strong communities, and so they had more money to distribute. And so Don and I jumped on a call immediately and told them that they should give it all to us. They gave us quite a lot, so we got another million. So the Boyd, Boyd total is up above two million that we've secured this year, which is really exciting. Next, please. Outreach and relationships. We did get to, I got to go to a meeting with Joaquin Altoro, who's the USDA Rural Housing Administrator, so like really like the head of housing for the USDA, had a really good conversation. I did that thing where I, I'm really sweet, and they'd say something that disrupts the whole conversation. Luckily, our mayor said that I wasn't too terrible, and I said things that needed to be said. But I did question whether or not the paperwork should be impossible for anyone to fill out, much less homeowners. So anyway, that was fun. Housing Colorado, our wonderful Beata went. She said that her two favorite sessions were on how to develop housing for people that are neurodivergent, and then also how to do community-led, so grassroots community housing. And then finally, we are meeting with Boyd and Boyd's project manager and Don on a weekly basis now to make sure that that project stays on track. And that is a picture of our, of our mayor doing karaoke at Housing Colorado. I only had to go through like a hundred pictures from Housing Colorado to find that gem.
That's uptown funk right there. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Okay, that's all I have, unless you have questions.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I'll open up the mic to, for council members. Any, any comments? Well, I'll, I'll, I'll make a comment. You and your team are doing an amazing job, and you're touching on several different pockets of our community that's helping the overall community, and everything that you all do is just greatly appreciated. Keep up the great work. People are talking about you and your team across the state, so keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And mayor, I do have a question based on this, but more for, for Ms. Sanchez. She, she, sorry. Rachel did make the comment that Don has had some, some movement within Horizon Heights. Is there in the future, maybe the spring after it's been settled for a little bit, for her to come and give a report to us?
I was thinking maybe, I think August is when they began moving individuals in, so maybe in August, just having the, the, an annual recap type of thing.
I think that'd be really interesting.
Yeah, I, I, I think obviously it's a, it's a project near and dear to our hearts. But it's just, it's amazing the stories that are happening, and so to be able to present that to the public and council would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wonderful job. Really appreciate it. Okay, all righty. The next item on the agenda is the first reading, an introduction to ordinance number thirty-five, twenty twenty-four, and ordinance amending the Unified Development Code for Use Related to Natural Medicine.
I should probably turn my mic on. So voters approved Prop one twenty-two and twenty twenty-two, and it decriminalized psilocybin mushrooms and a couple other psychoactive drugs. And we have to adopt some local regulations about the zoning and the appropriate placement of these. So I think it's important to preface this for the public that we can only regulate the time, place, and manner. We cannot ban the use of these natural medicines. They're, they're allowed by state law. There's a right that every citizen in Colorado has to be able to use them. Every Coloradan has a right to grow them in a twelve-by-twelve space. And so there, there's no way to disallow them, but there is just like any other sort of industry in your community. You can discuss from a zoning perspective where you'd like them to be. You can discuss hours of business and operation. And that's basically what we're here to discuss tonight. So we've had two work sessions on this topic. And the direction given by council at the work session, or the, the general direction from council, was more of a, a less restrictive option. We have brought two options tonight. So we have one that is a little bit more from the recommendations from my planning commission, excuse me, that really preferred that natural medicines be treated like marijuana. We did take the information that we take into council about how, that's not really how it's being regulated throughout the state, and they sort of doubled down on their original belief system that they'd like it to be regulated like marijuana. And I can illustrate the differences between what was the preferred alternative for council and the preferred alternative for the planning commission, excuse me. And they're relatively minor. But I do want to be clear that they were given the chance to reevaluate, and they stuck with their original recommendation. So basically, there are a handful of things we're talking about. We're talking about healing centers, which are the centers where people go to have what's more or less a guided trip. So a mental health professional, someone that's licensed by the state, watches them and guides them as they consume natural medicine. There's also natural medicine processing, so it's like creating some of the edibles or gummies or chocolates. And then there's also testing centers. And so those are the three categories that we have to find a box for them to go into, our zoning code. The healing centers, we basically, as staff, when we took it to the planning commission, and the same interpretation as city council, is that we sort of think of them as specialized counseling centers. And so it was staff's recommendation and council's preference that they be treated like, like a doctor's office, being allowed in the commercial business district and in some of our industrial districts. The planning commission took a different approach. They felt they should be treated more like adult-oriented businesses. So it's like, you know, vape shops or other things like that. And that really limits the healing centers to a handful of locations in our industrial park. So it really, really restricts it down. For the natural medicine processing, we really felt as staff that it should be classified as a light industrial. Council agreed with staff recommendation after discussion. Planning commission believed that it was more like heavy industrial and should be regulated with the same sort of severity as marijuana testing. Staff did feel like it was important to illustrate that processing natural medicines is very, very different than processing marijuana. So the extraction process to get cannabides out of marijuana derivatives involves butane and heavy chemicals, and lots of them are explosive. With natural medicines, you're basically covering mushrooms with chocolate, something like that. Pretty simple. It's more like a commercial kitchen. We would also change a handful of just definitions in our code just to allow for these new and changing laws in the state of Colorado. So those are, those are kind of the nitty-gritty details, but those are, that's the, the crux of the ordinance before you. So council does have the option to choose either the less restrictive ordinance that we're presenting or the more restrictive ordinance with the recommendations from planning commission, and then, of course, any option in between.
And it's my understanding that while planning commission decided to stay in their original decision-making, they really did appreciate council thinking of them to have it come back to them for further consideration, and that, that they did appreciate that.
They did. They did.
Okay, all righty. So what I'll do is I'll open it up for council to make any comments that they want to make, and then we'll see how that goes. Councillor Yan V. Hill?
Mayor, I went through the work sessions. We had discussions about this. I'm ready to make a motion that we go with the approved version A, the less strict version.
Okay.
And put it to a, on first reading, and set it for a second reading and public hearing on January fifteenth or soon thereafter.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? So I just want to make a comment, even in the work session, I think staff did a wonderful job. Planning and zoning did a wonderful job in, in thinking about what they're thinking about as well. I know we're going to have a second reading on this as well. I'm going to vote no because I'm more in favor of a more stricter one for the first year since we're limited in what we actually can do according to the passing of, of this issue. But I think there's something we could think about and talk about more at the next meeting, okay? All right, so everyone could start voting.
The motion passed four to two with Mayor Coleman and councillor Carson casting the no votes.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the first reading of ordinance number thirty-six, twenty twenty-four, and ordinance amending section twenty-one dash two, five oh one of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa to prohibit camping in tents on private property in excess of forty-eight hours with limited exceptions.
Thank you, mayor. As council will recall, we had a work session last month on this issue. It arises frequently, frequently. It, it arises on more than one occasion in the Alamosa municipal courts where we have uh, in the Alamosa municipal courts where we have people who are camping on vacant property within the city. Um, we have had them cited by some of our CSOs for violation of the ordinance relating to no staying in RVs for more than forty-eight hours. And I've had to throw out those citations because they were camping in tents, not in RVs. And that revealed that there's a hole in our ordinance because we do address staying for more than forty-eight hours in RVs as temporary homes. But we, we know we're addressed staying in something that isn't an RV, but kind of provides a similar sort of impact on the neighborhood. And as I say, there've been multiple issues um, where people have turned vacant properties, frequently properties that are owned by absentee landlords who don't reside anywhere nearby, uh, into sort of temporary homeless camps, if you will. Um, and that gives rise to this ordinance. Now, when council discussed this at the work session, a couple of issues got raised. Um, one was how this might affect temporary uses like for disaster relief. Uh, and another was what does this do to the quintessential childhood experience of camping out in the backyard? And so there was a, uh, I, I circulated a draft of what this ordinance would look like at that work session. What you have before you on first reading takes those comments into account and exempts persons providing disaster responses and minor children under adult supervision from the provisions of uh, that would, or from the activities that would be prohibited under the ordinance. So that's what we've got before you for first reading.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilor Young V Hill.
Mayor, I appreciate um, Mr. Suisao doing those exemptions. I think that was a concern for a lot of us up here, especially the, the kids. And that quintessential childhood experience, as you called it. So I move that we pass ordinance number thirty-six dash twenty-two-four on first reading and set it for a second hearing, a, a second reading and public hearing on January fifteenth at seven PM or soon thereafter.
I'll second.
I have a motion, second. Any further discussion? No? All right, please start voting.
The motion carried five to one with Councilor Carson casting the no vote.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is uh, Clark Traffic Circle and um, Del Sol Intersection.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor. Couple of things bringing to you tonight, and it really is basically Clark Street that we're looking at. Back in twenty-twenty, when we had that major development of Iron Horse, part of the requirement for them through the process is to do a traffic study. And they kind of assess, you know, what the area is going to look like, how much the development's going to impact the kind of the adjacent, a little bit more expanded intersections. And through that, through that study, there are two that they, that we're kind of talking about tonight. And that's the Clark and Del Sol intersection. Right now, it's currently a two-way stop, um, and then the, the traffic circle. One of the things that it identified, and the only thing it identified is of concern is the Clark and Del Sol. Um, they, they kind of give it a rating set, uh, uh, table. Go ahead and go through a few slides, sorry. One more, Holly. Yeah, so this is the intersection that we're talking about. It's basically just south of, of Walmart. They identified this as kind of on the edge of being a uh, intersection that needs to be addressed with different uh, forms of, of traffic control. Um, one more slide, Holly. And what they do is they do traffic counts and they do assessments and, and also growth. If you look at the Clark and Del Sol and you go over to the right in the PM section, if you look at the eastbound traffic, it's already at a D in twenty-twenty-one and a C for the westbound traffic. So it's kind of like a, you know, your school grading system, A being good, B being okay. C is kind of where you, we kind of need to start taking note, you know, when do you start making changes? D is, of course, probably a little below average enough is, is uh, failure. And if you look at the top of it, it says LOS, and what that is, level of service, is what that means. Um, one more slide, Holly. If you look just below that, or I'm sorry, if you look above it, you'll see the, the Clark Street. Or I'm sorry, let me back up a little bit. In twenty-forty, it gets a, a level F rating for your eastbound traffic and westbound is D. So, you know, I know it's quite a few years out, but we're already seeing a little bit of increased traffic. Um, we had twenty-five accidents, accidents in that intersection since twenty-twenty-two. And so we're, we're gonna go ahead and move forward with a four-way stop for safety and also for traffic flow. One more slide, Holly. Then we're gonna talk a little bit about.
Just to help, so that's not something we're voting on tonight. But since it's a highly visible intersection, we wanted to make sure you guys are aware that based on the engineering numbers, the crash data, that it warrants becoming a four-way stop. And so if you have any questions on that before we move on to the traffic circle. Is that okay, Harry?
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilor Carson, then Councilor Krebs.
What took so long? No, I, uh, thank you. I think that is awesome. Um, yeah, anything, anything you need from me. I can't speak for everyone up here, but yeah, I, I, that makes me very happy. So thank you, guys.
Of course, planning commission had brought it up a few times. We had, you know, some community members reach out and talk about it a little bit. When you start taking the um, traditional traffic flow and habitual drivers and incorporating and changing something, it's a little bit of a risk. So we wanted to make sure we had our ducks in a row. You know, we're gonna actually put a four-way stop with the east and west with flashing stop signs. Uh, we'll put billboards, we'll put inlays in the, in the asphalt and stuff like that. So we want to make sure we're prepared before we make this change. But I think it's certainly important for that, for that intersection.
That was just for that part, right?
Yeah.
And that was my question, Harry, was because it's a well-used intersection and people are used to a certain way of doing it. What kind of safety precautions are you throwing up? But I like blinky lights, so thank you.
Well, it does work, it does help, but you know, it doesn't, if somebody's not on their, or on their cell phone and just not paying attention. You know, hopefully everybody will still kind of pay attention and look around them because it is new and it'll take a little bit to get used to, so.
It is another reason though why having these engineering studies are important. Because if you don't have the data to support it, it, it could put the city a little bit at risk. So it's good to have this kind of data to protect us.
Councilor Henley, thank you.
I'm trying to, so I, I think it would solve it. I, I guess I'm just asking a question. So obviously, if it's a four-way stop and you know how off of the highway, you know, you turn by Chili's to go in, is there ever a chance that'll back up so where, where that street backs up into the highway? Does, does that make sense what I'm trying to ask?
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a great question. Um, so there's a certain amount of allotment you need for stacking. And because of this, you've got a basically a, a whole block to work with before you get to the highway. And then in the highway, they also have deceleration lanes that can be used to accommodate stacking as well. We don't ever expect it to get to that level, maybe three to four cars deep, but nothing to the, to the extent. I think our biggest concern were semis, as they would take up a lot more space. But evaluating, I think we're, we're in good shape, so. Yep.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Carson.
To that point, real quick, I've seen that, that intersection, like, just I think people don't realize it, but used as a four-way, like people freak out and so they start stopping on the tra, on the direction you're saying. And so I've seen a car stop there for five, three, five seconds. And it does stack up pretty quick to that corner. But I think, I, I agree. I think that lane coming off the highway would help that because I think it's way needed, even if the stacking is kind of a risk.
Yeah, yeah. In visiting with the PD, that is, that is probably the biggest, or one of the, the intersections that they have the biggest concerns and the biggest problems with. So um, I asked uh, Captain Spengler if he had any other concerns with other intersections within the city, and he really didn't. He said that was really the biggest problem, so.
The one on, the one at City Market, the one where you're turning out by the bank, that one, we can't do anything about that one just because of the proximity to the other stoplight, right? You know, the one.
By the bowling alley. Yeah, that's.
No, 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 not that one. Not that one. The one that's uh, uh, right coming out of City Market between City Market and Alamosa State Bank.
Yeah. Yeah, they're both private exits. And so there's, there's really not much we can do.
Yeah, I thought that was the case. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
So we'll move on to the, the uh, traffic circle. So I know there's a, you know, a lot of community members that don't like it, um, care for it. Um, but, and I kind of want to give a little bit of history as, as Eric and I was talking earlier today about it. I think when this discussion started, probably in like twenty-seventeen, twenty-fifteen, somewhere in there. You know, it was Pat Steenberger that was really concerned about, you know, a high school student full of kids pulling out into that intersection and vehicles going, you know, at a high rate of speed. Because Clark is one of our busiest roads in the city. And so he started looking at it options. And, and this is a design that he came up with. And while it's not the best, you know, use for traffic flow, safety, it gets A ratings across the board. Um, if you look at that, go back to the tables, even through twenty-forty with the projected growth, it still meets and exceeds what our standards would be expected, both in safety and traffic flow. So while we thought, bring it to council, um, look at possibly, you know, some options. You know, go ahead and to the next couple of slides. What we really want to look at is, does council want to see a change? And if so, what does that change look like? And if, you know, it could be even just asking the question of, is there a, an engineer out there who can come up with a different design that would be the best use of that intersection? He may look at this and say, with what you have to work with, this is your best option. But it comes at a price tag. We're estimating just for the traffic study because we want to have a, a current traffic study dependent on the engineer's expectations before he will look at a design. So we'd go through the first step, a traffic study. He could give us some design ideas, estimating anywhere from fifteen to twenty thousand. It's out of the general fund. And then the next step would be, you know, the, the, the construction side. And, and it's really hard to guess what that would be because we don't know what kind of ideas he would have that would, and you know, the effect of the, his design would have on the current road and how much that could possibly cost. So really looking for council's feedback tonight and direction, if, if you want to pursue different avenues. Or if we want to, knowing it meets the safety and uh, traffic flow, just leave it as is.
And I also think, I don't want to speak out of turn, but there will be some limits on potential designs because I think this design uses up as much of the easements as we have. So it would involve purchase of property if it's something dramatically different than this or a three-way stop type of situation. So just when you're thinking through cost, I think it's important to note that we're using up about every inch that we can um, type of situation here.
That south lane, where you, where you have kind of that curb to the south, it is to the, to the property line. So the little traffic circle or, you know, that east-westbound, you can almost just drive straight through it. Being the ability to move that over during the construction just wasn't there. We didn't have the property. And you know, should we have tried to, I think, actually I think Pat reached out to the property owner to see if he could purchase a little more land there. But we were tied to the constraints of, within our right of way.
Okay, so we got multiple councils, uh, members who want to make comments. So we start off with Councilor Carson, then Councilor V Hill, then Councilor Krebs, and then Councilor Jackie V Hill. And of course, Councilor, yes, okay, so let's go in that order.
All right. Um, thank you for looking at that. Uh, yeah, I've had a, a few questions about it. So I just have one suggestion. I went and drove it and looked at it. And, and I'm wondering if, taking that fifteen grand and, because we asked, I asked you about speed bumps and we said they were illegal. But, but hold on, hold on, let me. I'm wondering if we could take that fifteen grand and can't we put ridges back from, you know, coming from Walmart a hundred feet out of whatever the, the code is, put those hard ridges that, that slow you down? I think they're coming from high school. There is some, right? The ridges that make the, the tire ridges that slow you down? Is there a way to put those um, east and west, even if you doubled them, um, to slow that traffic down? Because that's been my biggest concern there. I've literally seen a car going towards McDonald's ramp that thing. Like an old Buick hit it and go flying right over it because they didn't know it was there. I mean, it was funny, but it wasn't, you know, funny. But couldn't you just do something simple like that and slow traffic down on the eastbound? Because I, I went and drove it a few times and I think, observing it, I think if you had those ridges set back on the Walmart side and the McDonald's side, people would slow down and it would fix a lot. Because people come into it flying from Walmart. The, from the church side, I, I, I don't see them hauling, you know, hauling so much. But from the Walmart side, you see people coming flying. If you had those ridges that kind of, you know, I don't know what they're called.
Rumble.
Rumble strips?
Okay, yeah, if you had those back there, I mean, I don't know if they cost fifteen grand, but I, I'd rather spend the fifteen grand on that than a traffic study telling us we can't move it. Because we've looked at it and that's pretty impossible to move. So it would be my suggestion that we do something like that instead of spending money on trying to build something that we're really, or, or even trying to study something that we really can't change.
Is your, is your goal through this process to slow traffic down?
That's the complaints I've gotten, that people, you're coming up to the stop sign in the morning and that you can't get into the traffic circle, circle because people are flying. Some people complained about students coming into it fast. But what I saw when I drove it and went checked it out was people coming from the Walmart side kind of flying. That, that was mostly the most dangerous thing. And they don't stop. If you're going in the traffic circle, if somebody's coming from Walmart kind of full force, they don't care if you're in there. They're just gonna drive right through it. And most people maybe don't understand that. So whether it's flashing lights and a rumble strip, something to slow people down, I think it'd help. And it may be cheaper, way cheaper in the long run.
So I don't have an answer for that.
No, I got you.
Certainly look into it. Usually they use those as kind of identifying markers, like you're, you're traveling out of the lane of traffic, you know?
Gotcha.
So, but it, it also works for, you know, a stop sign to hit, you know, it's a. Alert mechanism, so there's that possibility.
And, and this isn't related to anything that, Councilor, you have just said. But when you talk about in your language that it's a, it's a functioning intersection, I don't think I heard you say, we haven't had accidents either. Is that correct?
So I believe Joey came up with two since twenty-twenty-two and they were just minor fender benders.
Okay. So I, I, okay, because I didn't hear you say that. But that has nothing to do as far as the rumble strips to get their attention that you're approaching something.
Thank you, Councilor Carson. Uh, Councilor Young V Hill, then Councilor Krebs, then Councilor Jackie V Hill, then Councilor Henley.
Thank you, Mayor. So me being up, up here for almost twelve years now, I was around when this came through and people freaked out. And it's done its job. It's kept it safe. It has slowed people down. There used to be a fellow counselor up here who was strongly against this. Um, but it's, it's doing what it's supposed to do. Just because it's exotic, it's something you might see in the big city, doesn't mean it's not good and it's not effective. It's doing its job. The only thing I would, I would maybe recommend, and I'm not an expert, I don't, I don't know much about this. But could we raise the middle circle up a little bit so that people aren't driving over the top of it? But I understand you have to be able to see the traffic coming and going. Um, because if you see, if you look, there's a, Durangle has a bunch of roundabouts. And there, the middle, whatever you call that, is up two or three feet. And there, and they have nice planners in there and that kind of thing. But no, I think this, I am strongly, my opinion is strongly, we keep this, it's doing its job. Um, and there you go.
So, yeah, if it was a, a full-size roundabout, you could do that. The intent with this, it was a mountable curb for like your fire truck to be able to drive up and over it and make those turns. And that's why it's a standard height with a rolled edge.
Thank you, Councilor Krebs, and then Councilor Jackie V Hill, and Councilor Henley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so with the future growth that is expected or anticipated for that area out behind the high school, was this, and maybe you can help with that, but was this part of the plan of with the anticipated growth, this will be a better use of the space than a three-way stop or not doing anything at all? Especially with all the high school traffic along Maroon, I believe it is. Um, so for me, if this was built with the future in mind, people don't like change. And so I totally get it. But I don't want to spend city funds to look at something that's not a problem. It's just an annoyance. And with time, it, it will pass. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Krebs, Councilor Jackie V Hill, and Councilor Henley.
I agree. Um, I've been through that road thousands of times. I agree, um, I've been through that road thousands of times and. I've never seen anybody that's speeding or never got close to being in an accident or anything. And if there is no safety concerns, I don't see spending money where it doesn't need to be spent.
Thank you councillor Jackie V Hill, councillor Hensley.
I guess I'll just say ditto. I, I, I was going to say, but yeah, I don't see, I don't see the issue and I guess that nobody's explained why this is a issue, so, yeah.
Okay, councillor.
Just, just a quick, John V Hill. I want to dovetail off Miss Crebs' points is, um, it is an annoyance and that's the way it was supposed to do. It's supposed to annoy you, it's supposed to slow you down, that, that's the intention of it. And, uh, I do, I do remember back in the history piece of this, and I think this Hensley could confirm. Is we knew that it would be a little bit of a bottleneck during, um, school drop off, school pickup and at game time, at the end of games. And so it's been around for seven years and we're good.
Okay, uh, any other lights? I, I drove it too the other day, I drive it all the time, but I really don't pay much attention to a lot of the things. But one thing I, I noticed when I drove it the other night was. We've done an excellent job of putting up street signs on that street and warning, it's about ten to fifteen in each direction. Like soon as you leave that stop, I'm like goodness, um, so I, I think we've done what we can do for now. Uh, the good news is there's not a high rate of accidents, um, and there's no real justification for spending the tax dollars at this particular time. So I don't know what you need from us right now, I know councillor Carson posed a question about the rivets in the streets or things like that. I don't know if that's something you want to.
I think it's something we can go, look at, but, um, since I'm, I'm sensing a general direction not to move forward with anything. We can e- explore the rumble strips because from a cycling perspective, there are some potential issues. So I don't feel like we need a motion or anything like that.
I, I was going to say, this, this comes up for some reason on a fairly regular basis. So I think a motion would actually be good, just so we did have a record that council moved that we're going to leave as, as it is.
Okay, and before we go into that, um, I see mics lit up again and we got councillor Carson, councillor Young V Hill. And I saw one more, but, okay, so we'll go with, I want them to talk about what they need to talk about, thank you.
Uh, I didn't, I didn't find it, uh, as a necessity to spend money on, that wasn't the goal, that wasn't what I was getting at. I'm saying if we were going to do something that would be the most effective, because it's more than an annoyance. I've seen cars fly over that thing, fall in ass and you lift that curb, you'll kill, somebody would have died. The, the car that I saw fly over that, three inches more, somebody got killed. So it, 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 I get that it's an annoyance, but people did have valid complaints, you know what I mean, the ones that came to me. I, I'm not saying we go there and spend money, if, if, if there's not car accidents happening, but. You have to be careful how you change it, you couldn't raise it, um, you know, if it is doing its job, that's fine. But my only suggestion was if you're going to spend money, that'd probably be about the most effective thing, just slowing traffic from the Walmart side, that's really what I saw. So that was my point from that.
Okay, thank you councillor Carson, councillor Young V Hill.
And I think most of us agree with you, Mr. Carson, so, uh, I will make a motion that we do not spend any city funds. On the Clark Traffic Circle. And explore maybe some rumble strips or other mechanisms to slow traffic coming in from the west, from Walmart area.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting. Okay.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you council, thank you, Harry. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, public hearing and second reading for ordinance number thirty three dash twenty twenty four. And ordinance amending section five dash twenty five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Alamosa. To provide for referral of campaign finance complaints to the Secretary of State when the city clerk's office has a conflict of interest.
Okay, um, Mayor and council, this is just a review of this ordinance, Eric, um, went over it with you guys at the last meeting. Um, so Colorado recently enacted, uh, House Bill twenty four dash twelve eighty three. Which provides for the Colorado Secretary of State's office to review campaign, campaign finance complaints. Um, that arise out of municipal campaign matters. Um, where the city clerk's office, which we would otherwise deal with the complaints, um, might have a potential conflict, so. And we have to adopt this ordinance in order for us to refer to the Secretary of State.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martinez, so at this time we'll open up the public hearing and second reading for ordinance number, ordinance number thirty three dash twenty twenty four. Do we have anyone in the audience who would like to come up to the podium, make any comments, uh, during this public hearing, if so, now is the time? Okay, I don't see anyone in the audi, in the audience coming up to the podium, so Ms. Martinez, if you can give instructions to the Zoom participants. Of how they can make comments at this time in this public hearing, I should appreciate it.
Yes, sir, if you want to make a comment for this public hearing, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen, if you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Mayor, I do not see anyone choosing to raise their hand.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and I'll bring it back to council, uh, councillor Young V Hill.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number thirty three dash twenty twenty four on second reading.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, great job, we're moving on down the agenda, everybody, uh, almost wrapping up twenty twenty four, committee reports, do we have any committee reports? Okay, we have, uh, two, I don't know which one of you had your lights on first, so, okay, thank you councillor Crebs.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I'll make mine really quick, I had, I've had two meetings, library board, we, um, just finalized some policy, she's still tweaking the policy, she's. Uh, Maria's doing an amazing job and she's keeping, she set herself some strategic goals. Over the next year, two years, five years, and she's keeping herself, her staff and, and the library board on task to achieving those goals. So I'm very happy to be a part of that. Um, and then just a quick update on the senior center, they were able to secure some funding, the Thursday lunches are going very well. And, um, the, they've been packing lunches on Wednesdays to go out with the Wednesday meals. And so every, they've, they've been able to secure some funding around that and they've got an all hands on deck when it comes to building the sandwiches. The day before, so that's, that's going very well and just a thank you to the community and everyone who stepped up to help out. Either by making sandwiches or donating food or just monetary, it's, it's appreciated.
Thank you councillor Hensley.
Um, so no, no major updates, but I just wanted to say that I went to the meeting, so, you know, to keep it in the forefront. But rec board really was more updates, um, nothing too major in that one. Main Street Committee, same thing, is no, no major updates, obviously very engaged. One thing I would say is when Thanksgiving comes late like it does, it does affect our, our small businesses and they're feeling it this year. Um, business has been down and November obviously hurt a lot for having such a late Thanksgiving, so just to remember to try to support our small businesses. I then had the marketing board, which we had our reception, um, which was very well attended and was good. And then, um, oh, tree board, so I was at the tree board meeting too, I'm super excited, uh, obviously. Discussion on the grant, um, because that's a really sizable grant for the tree board and so looking to what that's going to look like. And then obvious, uh, having some discussion on the grant that we do, um, in regards to, uh. Our residents that want to buy, to get a tree and it gets fifty percent paid for, um, so how to get better, um, response stats. We had some good vibrant discussion on that, um, and that's it, I think those were all my meetings.
Okay, thank you, uh, councillor Hensley, that brings us to, um, staff announcements.
Well, I guessed that we were going to end at eight thirty, so I need to fill about thirty minutes of time. I just have two short ones, we do have the parade that's this Saturday at six P M, so, um, it's a great community event, so just wanted to do a reminder for that. And both in January and February, we have some meetings canceled, so it's going to be maybe a little bit lighter, give you some free time, um, those types of things. Your next meeting is actually January fifteenth, so, um, go out there and enjoy life and. Get some stuff done for your personal life, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sanchez, okay, that brings us to the last item on the agenda for twenty twenty four, everybody, uh, council comments. Any council comments, councillor, uh, Young V Hill?
Mayor, just want to wish you all a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and to all the staff, thank you for all you guys do. And, uh, let's get going in twenty five.
All right, thank you councillor Avi Hill, councillor Carson and councillor Jackie V Hill.
Uh, same, Merry Christmas to all, to all, Happy New Year, um. I won't be here, January fifteenth meeting, so I won't be in the meetings in January, just so council knows, um. And I think it's been a pretty good year, it was interesting, a little bit of ups and downs, but I think we did a good job. And so I just want to tell city staff, thank you and Merry Christmas and you guys the same.
And that's it. All right, thank you councillor Carson, councillor Jackie V Hill.
I just want to say happy holidays to everyone and this was the end of my first year and it was a very interesting first year. And, um, I enjoyed being on the council and I look forward to what twenty twenty five is going to bring.
Thank you, thank you, any other lights? Okay, well, I'll wrap up the final comments, I want to thank the city staff and city council, uh, for a, a very, uh, good twenty twenty four. We had some changes, we had some additions, we had some subtractions, we had a whole bunch of things going on, but we found a way to continue moving forward, that, that means a lot. And, uh, I'm looking forward to, uh, twenty twenty five and I hope everyone have a Merry Christmas and a happy and prosperous new year, thank you, everybody. This meeting is twenty twenty four officially adjourned.